Call the meeting to order, August 25, 2025. Start with the pledge.
But was you really so glad? Sitting there in the room, probably at least three hands. One nation, I think, uh, indivisible, the teaching of this as well.
Okay, any adjustments to the prepared agenda?
But nothing here. Make a motion we approve as submitted.
Seven. Public forum. Anybody here want to bring an issue before the board that's not already slated for discussion? Doesn't look like it. Moving on. Approval of the minutes of August 11th and 18.
But he hasn't seen anything wrong with them. I will make a motion that we approve the August 11th and August 18 minutes.
Any further discussion, questions? None? All in favor? Prove. Committee and board reports, managers report, fence install.
I. Yes, Mr. Chair, just to give you an idea, um, some additional information. As you know, we had three vendors that had provided us, um, proposals to put that fence up. The low bidder was, um, Anchor Fence. Um, and there were some concerns among the board, um, in reference to whether or not the, uh, the fence company was going to put concrete in the bottom of each one of the posts, simply because it was an eight-foot post. And there was a concern that the wind could really make a big factor to that. So, um, I reached out to them and, and he had indicated to me, um, that he would, it wasn't his intention to unless they could not get the four-foot depth. Um, and then he would cement them. And I requested that he provide us proposal with cement in each inch post. Um, he adjusted it by, um, I think it was $620, still kept him at the low rate. So I approved the, um, fence proposal as, as given to us by Anchor. Um, and he's ordered the fence and as soon as it comes in, uh, they'll contact us and we'll coordinate, um, if we have to do any more dig safe. Not quite sure Ben already had done that, um, in that location. So I think we're all set to go once the, once the fence is in. So. Um, the other thing is that we're, we're still waiting patiently from, uh, Lena to, to wrap up her analysis of the, um, uh, value the community has in the, the real estate update that's recently been done. Um, I spoke to her on Thursday. Um, she was tweaking some, uh, land values, um, reference to, uh, certain, um, data that was placed into the, uh, uh, vision form. Um, she was correcting that with the Vision folks. Um, and then she was also working on the, uh, TIF. Uh, she wanted to do a complete analysis of the, and she'd already done the analysis on the CMP TIF. And she was completing it on the, um, Arundel Cottages TIF. So I provided some additional information for her. So she could wrap her head around that. Um, she wasn't in the office today. She had to go to, uh, Bangor to pick up her exchange student. But, uh, I'm sure she'll be back in, uh, tomorrow and we'll try to wrap that up. Um, her initial analysis with, with our discussions is that we're still in that 850 range. Um, based on her review of, uh, the values that we've, um, been able to, uh, create. Um, and my thought is that once we have that and I have that final number, uh, we'll hold a special meeting, um, sometime either the end of this week or the first of next, right after Labor Day to, to get that wrapped up and so we can get the bills out. Um, they'll be due in mid-October, so we want to make sure we get those out. So that's where we are.
A couple of separate questions. People who had meetings with the assessment professionals still haven't gotten any written notice or anything, what decision was made?
Sure, I'm happening. Yes, it is. Um, I spoke to her last week. Uh, she had fine tuned the letter. The letter was given back to Vision. Any adjustments? Those folks should be getting a letter from, uh, through Vision, um, of any adjustments that were made to their properties.
Okay. And the second question I have, and maybe this isn't the appropriate time, but I think it might be worth talking about ahead of time. Um, the, uh, voters approved using, remember, right, approved using up to 500,000 of fund balance to, uh, reduce the, uh, the mill rate. Is that correct?
At the board's discretion, yes, sir.
At the board's discretion.
Correct.
Is now the appropriate time to discuss that? Or is that something we should wait till a special meeting?
Um, I'm not quite sure. Um, it's, it's at the board's discretion to use that 500,000 in the event that, um, that they believe that the tax rate may be, um, maybe too high, maybe they want to adjust it based on that information that they presented in the past. As we did last year, uh, there was a goal to try to keep it at 17 again. And we used that 500,000 to keep it at 17. So it was, uh, that was the way it was used. So it's actually a discussion that happens, um, when the tax rate is being set, whether or not the board is going to use that.
Keith usually provides us, Chip, Keith usually provides us numbers with, this is using $200,000, this is 300 or 400. So he gives us a breakdown of using the different amounts. So at that point, we can make the decision on what we want to do.
Okay, as long as you got a sense of that in your, all says that.
Sure. Yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, moving on to business section then, going to prove the special town meeting warrants.
Yes, uh, I think all parties have, uh, sort of seen the, the warrant. Uh, I've got the final, uh, draft here. Um, if we sign tonight, it's my intent to have that special town meeting on the 22nd of September. Um, if it's signed this evening, we'll go ahead and get that, um, advertised, uh, immediately and get it out to the, to the folks that they know will have it that evening.
Uh, regarding Article Two, uh, and the seven-year lease purchase agreement, is that something that, that's something we'll go out and get solicit bids for?
We've already received three estimates, uh, three bids for the, uh, interest rates. I provided those in the memo of August 6th. Um, so you have that information. It's just a matter of, uh, the, probably the chief and I just sort of finalizing that. Um, we anticipate that that, um, month, that yearly rate's going to be around 160 to 162,000 a year.
What, what's the interest rate?
Uh, I think it was, I think the best that we had was 4.91. There was one for 4.98 and then there was one for 5.56. Okay, thank you. So I'd entertain a motion for this.
To approve the special town meeting warrant for the 22nd September. Any further discussion, questions? All in favor then?
I'll send it on down.
Yep.
Thank you.
The next item is the Neighborhood Housing Trust Discussion and Presentation. Larissa is here. Nice to meet you.
Yes, just as Larissa sits down, I wanted to make sure that you all received her information. Um,
We just have it on screen.
No.
Okay.
Do you need this?
Well, yes.
No. Uh, you, you're IT challenging me, Larissa, if you want something on the screen, so.
No, no.
Okay, all right. Sorry about that. I, I, I single paged it, but yours have got single and double page, so.
Love it.
All right.
Um, I'm tempted to do this like story time, but I won't. I'll just trust you all the follow-ups. Um, hello, I'm Larissa Crockett. I'm the executive director of the Neighborhood Housing Trust. And we are your friendly neighborhood housing, um, builders here in Arundel, Kenabunk and Kenabunkport. Um, and we expanded as a reminder, I came and saw you guys last fall, um, when we expanded from just serving Kenabunkport into serving the broader community of the three towns. And got our new little logo. And I always think of you guys as the greenhouse. Um, because you guys have such a deep agricultural history. I think of Kenabunkport with its nautical roots as the blue house. And I think of Kenabunk with its mill town, um, experience as the brick red orange house. So just in case you see our logo, you guys can think of yourselves as the green. And we do, we build homes which we think really create futures, not just for the people that end up buying our homes, but also a sustainable future for the communities. What we're seeing more and more in this town and in Kenabunk and Kenabunkport certainly is really a shift towards our housing stock not being seen as a place to live, but as an investment. And one of the things that we know is that while we all cherish the, um, energy and the econ- economics that our seasonal population brings in, there's also a real need to make sure that we never lose our core base year-round resident population that really sits on boards like this one, works in our local spaces and really makes a community feel like home. So, um, why do we do this? We do this because the market cannot build homes that the regular, normal people of these communities can afford. And to highlight that, I provided with you, this is year-to-date data as of August 9th. The average sales price of homes, this is not the average price they went on the market for. This is the average price that the houses sold at. And if you'll notice, the average home price, sale price for a Rundle is $687,000. Now to put that into some perspective, okay? I bought my first home in 1998. Nice little post-World War II cape on two-thirds of an acre in downtown Summersworth. We bought it for 88,000. When you inflate that to today's dollar, to today's dollars, it's around 180,000. We could afford that as a young family, starting out, we could do that. And a young family starting out today, that was earning 80,000 a year, 90,000 a year, they could afford to do that too. But what we know is that if you are a young household today and your total household income is about $90,000 a year, what you can afford, and when we use that word, we mean you're not putting yourself into such house debt, you can't afford to cover the rest of your expenses. So no more than a third of your income is being used to cover your whole costs. You can afford a $290,000 house. That's for a household earning 90,000. Who is that? Well, it might be a household that has, um, an RSU 21 ed tech and an RSU 21 bus driver in that household. It might be a household that has a single earning earner household that has a firefighter, that's a full-time firefighter. Or it might be a full-time police officer that's been on duty for, you know, five to 10 years. $90,000 would be, um, a first to five-year teacher who is maybe also partnered with somebody who is a bank teller. Okay, these are the people that make up our town and make up our communities. That's who can afford $290,000 of home. So who can afford $687,000 of home? A whole lot more income. Okay, my husband and I today, my husband is a very successful, uh, machinist and welder in his own shop. I have a good career as well. We could never afford to buy a $687,000 home. The bank would not give us a mortgage for that. So when we talk about why we do this work, we do this work because the people of this community can no longer afford to live in this community if they're trying to buy a house for the first time. And Arundel at 687 is still our most affordable town in these three towns. Kenabunkport is hitting 1.74 million. Good times. And Kenabunk is at over 900,000 now. Okay, these are prices that mean when we have, so I've got a 27-year-old and a 25-year-old. And when they look at buying a house, I was 21 when I bought my first house with my husband. 25-year-olds and 27-year-olds with good careers, good jobs, they could never, ever afford a $687,000 home. It's not possible. So how do we do this? We're both a 501(c)(3) and a 501(c)(4). So when people make their very generous, um, donations to us as part of our annual campaign, those are tax deductible. They support our (c)(3) work. When we are the beneficiaries of the municipal land, for instance, where we're building right now, that actually comes into our (c)(4). Why does this matter? It allows us to build housing for people across income spectrums. So we believe that there is value in creating housing for a household, not just that's earning $90,000 a year. But what we know is that even if you're a household earning 120,000 a year, you still can't afford to live here. Okay, so our (c)(4) allows us to build housing for people that are earning in that 120% sort of space of the area. We, everything is based on what's called area median income, which is determined annually by HUD. They look at it from a county level and Arundel falls into the York County, um, area median income calculation. And right now for a household of four, that's about $97,000 a year. Okay? Um, we have one paid staff member, that's me. Okay, we run a tight ship. We have, um, space for 15 board members. We have 14. We're holding a seat, um, for a representative from, you know, one certain town that we will allow to remain nameless. Um, and we have five standing committees that do a lot of our day-to-day work. Um, fundraising work, our real estate development work, making sure that our finances are in order and making sure that we're, you know, using those donations and, um, any sort of grant monies, the way that they are intended. Our stewardship committee is the committee that really helps us do outreach to the public to make sure that anyone that wishes to be part of our application process knows what to do and how to do so, as well as being there to support homeowners once they're in place. Our homeowners are autonomous and anonymous. We don't like to parade them around. They're just people that live in our community, work in our community, volunteer in our community. But we are there as a resource. These are mostly first-time home buyers and we want to make sure that they're succeeding. So our stewardship committee is there to be of resource as well. And then we are in the middle of a strategic planning process for the first time and we have a strategic planning committee as well. So I'm here to talk to you today, um, well, first about who we are. Let me stop right there. Any questions about who we are, why we are, how we are? Yes, Mr. Bassett?
Are you the organization that, uh, I believe there were two homes built in Capeport a couple of years ago?
So the two small homes in Cape Porpoise, the capes that are right next to each other, those are actually Habitat for Humanity homes and.
Not sure where they're located, uh, but okay, never mind.
So we have, I'll, gonna answer it for what we do have. So we have currently that finished up in 2022, a six-home subdivision on, um, right across kind of diagonal away from the police department in Kenabunkport on that road that brings you into Cape Porpoise. There's two roads there, Briggs Way and Tiger Lily Way. Each of those roads has three homes on it and we have, um, people that live there. Last June, in June 24, we were really excited. We got to test the model. We really insist on permanent affordability. We have zero interest in working this hard to get homes into a market at a price that normal people can afford to simply have those homes flipped. If we're going to sell you a home for 350,000, we have no interest in you flipping it for 697 once we've sold it to you. Okay, so we got to test that model this past June. We had a household, um, that really, they wanted to live in Lyman. They wanted to live where they had, they wanted large amount of land. They didn't want to be able to see any neighbors. And Kenabunkport's not always the best place to, to do that, right? So they were very, um, they sold their home. We helped them find a buyer using a lottery process again, making sure that people were income qualified, making sure that they had taken a first-time homebuyer class so that we knew that they really knew what they were kind of getting into. And, um, we welcomed in a new household, kids in the school, young man. Uh, the son works at one of our local restaurants in Kenabunk, um, and, and, uh, parents work as well, uh, in the community. So really glad to see that model work. One household moving on to different housing that better met their, they were a growing family, um, met their needs and then continued that permanent affordability.
How, how do you prevent the flip? Is it written into a contract or?
Yeah, absolutely. So there's a couple of different ways to do that. At the Heritage Woods neighborhood, which is what I was just talking about, the Briggs Way and Tiger Lily Way. The housing trust actually maintains ownership of the land underneath those homes. So any home sale has to involve us and that allows us to absolutely monitor that. And part of the land lease that those homeowners sign with us has very clear language that says they must be year-round residents. They may never use their home as a short-term rental. They, um, and if they sell their home, they're only allowed to sell their home to a household that is within the same income bracket that they were when they bought the home, as well as setting a maximum sales price. We have a formula that we use. It updates annually. We want our homeowners to benefit from changes in the economy that allow for that home price to kind of go up a little bit. We want them to gain some equity through market increase, but only in keeping with the increase in incomes. So they might see a $2,000, $3,000 increase in the value of their home in a year, but they're not going to see a 10 or 30 or $50,000 increase in that home. So they agree to those terms. For the neighborhood I'm about to talk to you about, we are not, we're going to use, um, treat that more like a condo association. The homeowners will also own the land. There will be land that they own that's, um, what's the word I'm looking for, Tom? What do we call it when it's a limited, uh, use, uh, limited common use?
Limited common area.
And then we have common areas as well. Um, and we will have deed restrictions on those homes that mirror the land lease language that we had before. So that we can, um, really do our best to ensure that all of the investment that the state has made, these homes are subsidized through main housing, as well as all of the grant funding that we've received to help bring those house prices down further, is going to stay in the fund and not be used to flip. Okay? So right now we are building a neighborhood called Landon Woods. It is named after, um, Ruth Benson Landon, who was a select board member in Kenabunkport, um, for a good number of years and a very active member of the community. Um, and this neighborhood consists of three duplexes. Kenabunkport has very clear, um, ordinance language that dictates what a two-family dwelling, a duplex can look like. One unit must be smaller than the other. They may not have main doors on the same side of the house. So when we went out to bid on this project, we were very clear. We were looking for a two-family dwelling that would meet what we called a Kenabunkport aesthetic. We wanted it to look like it had always been there and that it really belonged architecturally within this kind of this feel of the town. Because I think that one of the things that's important is that each town has a character. Each town has a feeling to it and we want to make sure that we are doing our best to match that feeling. So, um, it has a road that's coming in. It's going to be called Ruth's Way. And it's unfortunately a former quarry site. So if you look at your little scale drawing here that you've got on your thing, that big hole there in the center, that's a quarry. Fun. Not the sort of like go hide a body in it quarry. Okay, it's not so deep that you can get away with that. But you certainly wouldn't want to be wandering around at night without knowing where you were. Um, granite there though is gorgeous. We've been blasting that stuff for about a month now. And, uh, huge, huge chunks of very hard, a very hard granite is coming up out of the ground there. Um, so we've got this, this road coming in, um, and we have named these homes. We're going to see those in a minute. Um, but we think it's going to be charming. It's on Beachwood Avenue, um, and the, the three homes, three buildings each have a single-story home and a two-story home. So let's talk about what those look like. The single-story homes are just under 1,000 square feet. They have two bedrooms, one full bath, um, they have laundry, of course, there. And we really think that those are going to be a great fit for one to three people. Whether you are a single person, whether you are perhaps an older couple that no longer has children or, um, older adults living with you, or you are a couple that maybe has one child or a single parent with two children, we can see lots of different groupings that would really benefit from it and would like to have single-story living, smaller home to care for home. The two-story homes are just under 1,400 square feet. They have three bedrooms, all on the second floor. A full family bath on that second floor. And then there's a half-bath off the primary bedroom and a half-bath on the main floor. And we really picture those homes being perfect for three people or more. We will not, um, when we do our lottery process, we've released the frequently asked questions for the lottery process. And we are going to limit the three-bedroom homes to households of two or more. So if somebody is a one-person household, they will not be offered the opportunity to purchase a three-bedroom home. They will only be offered the opportunity to purchase a two-bedroom home. And part of that is called right sizing, the, the housing. While we don't wish to be, you know, too authoritarian and like, well, you can't have this or whatever. We do think that again, there's been so much investment from the community in making these homes happen that the purpose is to house as many people as we can. And that having a single person in a three-bedroom home doesn't feel like a good use of those resources. Um, so we have, um, we've named them. The single-story, this is for marketing purposes, so that when we're marketing the homes, we have some reference point. Um, the single-story homes are named after the birds that we have seen on the property and the two-story homes are named after the trees. It's a very heavily wooded property that are on the property. So we have the cardinal and the oak. And we have the finch and the pine. And we have the chickadee and the birch. And we actually are quite pleased. The chickadee is actually already been, um, sold, if you will, claimed by a woman from the lottery that we held back in June of 24, who was pulled, but was not the first pull, um, longstanding resident of Kenabunkport. And I have permission to use her story a little bit, uh, um, to kind of explain kind of who we build these houses for. So she is a retired woman. She retired as a social worker after many years as, as working as a social worker and, um, she moved in with her parents that were aging and to care for them in this nineteen, like 1970s, I think probably built small cape on an inland parcel in Kenabunkport. And when her parents passed, she inherited that property with her siblings. Now she still lives in the home, the siblings do not. And the siblings have no interest in continuing to own this home. And they would like to sell the home so that the siblings can benefit from the sale of the home. Once that happens though, she will not have, even though it's a home in Kenabunkport. How could, how could she possibly qualify for affordable housing? Well, if you have to share the proceeds of your, it's about an $800,000 valued home because it was built in the 1970s. It's never been updated on a small inland lot. Once she has divided that amongst her siblings, she will not have enough money to purchase housing again. And so as an example, it's fairly unique, but it's not entirely unique. We meet people in different situations often that maybe we hadn't thought of that need help staying in the community that they're already part of. And that's as an example of that. So we're really excited that she's going to be coming and joining this neighborhood. I was just down there, um, on Friday, taking photos. We're trying to track the progress as it's going. And she was down there, she's, um, the chickadee and birch are the furthest in of the home. And I could see a body kind of down, standing upright, because you know, it's not that type of quarry, um, down at the end of the, what will be the road. And it was her and she was just there. She's like, just like to kind of imagine, you know, what's going to be here. She's been really excited about this neighborhood. So we're excited about that too.
What, what kind of interest have you had in the lottery? Have you had a lot of interest in the lottery?
So I, yes, so if you'll remember, to June of 24, we made the news on every major news outlet about the number of how few people entered the lottery for our Briggs Way resale. And it was fascinating. So all those news stories hit in late June, early July. And we had, um, from Ju- July, I want to say July 15th to July 1 of this year, we had 550 people fill out our please keep me up to date with what's happening, these, this neighborhood application. So I sent out an email to 584 people, um, about a month ago saying, hey, guys, we are going to be moving forward with our application process. We'll be releasing that application soon. You might want to think about getting that first-time homebuyer class on your calendar. Um, we've released the full application in FAQ two weeks ago and I already have eight complete application packets back to me. and I already have eight complete application packets back to me. So we are expecting and we haven't really started the hard push of advertising yet. So we are expecting there to be quite a bit of interest. When I look at that, the um, preliminary interest application that we have on our website, I ask people to share with us, you know, where do you currently live? I'm curious about kind of the, the catch, catchment sort of area that we have. Um, I ask people to share with us how many people currently live in your household. And I ask them to share with us what their current income level is and where, if they are employed, they are currently employed and as what? Just for our own kind of internal looks to see what that, you know, who's applying for our homes. And what we have from that five hundred eighty four um, folks that took the time to fill that out, which is pretty good sample size. I was pleased with that. Uh, we have an average household size of two point nine. Okay, which I think really reflects what we're seeing nationally. People are having fewer and fewer children. So we don't have a lot of households of four or five or six people. We have a lot of either single parent with two kids, two parents with one kid sort of situations. Um, and we've had everyone from grocery store workers to firefighters, to police officers, to teachers, to the nurses, to the bank tellers that I mentioned. Like it's an interesting spread across sectors. Um, and in the applications that we've received so far, the eight that are complete, we have two RSU twenty one teachers that have applied. Um, we have two people that are a couple that both work at one of the local grocery stores. We have somebody that works for Main Health. Okay, just as kind of an example of where people are coming from that have already filled out that application. So we are right now, part of why I'm here is I'm really looking to have municipalities help us spread the word. Um, thank you to Keith for helping to spread it to your employees here in Arundel. Um, we have direct send all of this information to RSU twenty one to be distributed to all of the bargaining units there. Um, we want all of the municipal employees to know that this is an option and is happening. Um, and we want just people in general in the community. So if you are watching this right now or later, when you want to watch this, um, even if you yourself are not looking for a home, but you have someone in your life that has been really feeling desperate about the fact that they make a hundred thousand dollars a year and they still can't afford to buy a home. This is an opportunity for them to, to be a part of this process. So our website is NHTmain.org. It's right up there on the front page, the Landon Woods application process. There's a Google form that you can fill out as the application and then send in your income verification either by email, by mail, or we do keep a mailbox at the Kennebunkport Town Hall that people can drop it off in there. Um, and all of that is going to be due to us um, by October twenty fourth, the application and the income verification. By November seventh, in order to be entered into what we're calling the randomized drawing, so that people do not think that there's anything festive and flair about this, it's not a lottery, it's a randomized drawing. Um, in, is going to be in late November. And so by November seventh, people that wish to be entered into that must have, once they've been income qualified before October twenty fourth, they have to get their first time homebuyer class proof of taking that class to us. And they need to have a pre qualification letter from a mortgage lender that says that they have the ability to purchase one of these homes. And the, that population then will be put into the randomized drawing in late um, November. Right now we are still blasting that blasted road. It is um, it is taking a lot more time and a lot more money than we were hoping, um, but needs must, right? So we continue to blast away. It should be about another week and a half. Uh, spoke to the blasting company today. We're really, really hoping to be done by the end of next week. And they will be taking a long weekend, um, Friday through Monday to, to take a little bit of a break and to give all of the neighbors a little bit of break um, from the, from the experience. Um, and then comes the fun part of jackhammering all of that blasted rock into pieces that can actually be moved off the property. And then we will start with, well drilling is already kind of underway. Foundation work will get going as soon as the blasting is complete. And we um, originally had hoped to be framing by the end of August. That is clearly not going to happen. So if we're really lucky, we'll start that framing by the end of September. Um, and are still are on schedule and our goals are set to have those homes complete by the end of December and people in them. So it's an ambitious goal. Um, we are working with PATCO Construction. They have been amazing to work with. We're really grateful for their um, expertise. They certainly know how to build houses and we're grateful for that and just their commitment to the project. Um, we went out to bid on this project really in January of twenty four. And we are now building, of course, in August of twenty five. And I want to just shout out to the, from the rooftops, they kept their pricing for us. They, they were committed to the project. So if you see a PATCO person walking around, please say thank you. Um, so what does this project look like? So it is um, costing us four hundred forty eight thousand dollars per unit to build. And I think that that's important for people to understand. When people talk about, well, why are houses so expensive? Why can't, you know, what's the problem here? We do, that four hundred forty eight thousand dollars, we're, we're not making a profit. We are a nonprofit. That is the cost to us to build a house. And these are not elaborate homes. As a reminder, half of these homes are just under a thousand square feet. Half of these homes are just under fourteen hundred square feet. I've picked out the flooring, I've picked out the, these are, these are not um, hardwood floors. These are not quartz countertops, right? These are good, solidly built starter homes. They are modest homes and they are still costing four hundred forty eight thousand dollars to build.
Do, does that include land or is that just the construction?
That includes, that includes, no, the land was generously donated to the Housing Trust by the town of Kennebunkport. Um, that four hundred forty eight thousand includes the road, aforementioned road, um, which is a significant portion of that. It includes all of the infrastructure that needs to happen, wells, septic systems, all of those things. But the cost of that house for us to build. So how do we do this? We work with some, a group called the Genesis Fund. They work here in Maine um, and in New Hampshire to some extent with not for affordable housing projects, both nonprofit and for profit builders as um, kind of starter money. So your pre development fund money, your engineering costs, if you have infrastructure costs. So they provided six hundred thousand dollars of the need. It's a two point seven million dollar project. And Bangor Savings um, financed the other two point one million. So we are pulling down funds as needed only to try to keep those interest costs as low as we possibly can. Um, and so that cost includes all of the soft costs, so that, you know, engineering, any sort of um, state permitting fees, things like that. Infrastructure costs, we do have a generous contingency, thank goodness, because as I mentioned, our blasting has gone on and is um, we're hitting close to that hundred thousand dollar additional cost for blasting that was unexpected. Um, and the home construction itself. We were identified as a recipient of the main housing um, subsidy through their affordable homeownership program this year, which is wonderful. So we are going to be, um, the program requires that the homes may not be sold for more than three hundred seventy eight thousand dollars. And they may not be sold to households that earn more than one hundred ten thousand, two hundred forty dollars a year. So that's set by Main Housing. They have very clear construction requirements. These homes are fully electrified. They are not allowed to have any sort of um, fossil fuel heating systems or um, hot water systems. So everything is fully electrified. They all have conduit in them, so that if at any point a homeowner wishes to install solar panels, all of that conduit work is already in place. So the installation should be a more streamlined process. And they are all have conduit in them to allow for any future electric vehicle charging stations that homeowners may wish to install as well. So they are prepared to be a fully electric home um, as homeowners wish. We are working right now, the board, um, three hundred seventy eight thousand is affordable to that hundred ten thousand, two hundred forty dollar household. And it's affordable even to households that are at more like a hundred thousand, hundred two thousand dollars a year. It is not affordable to a household that's earning eighty five thousand dollars a year or ninety thousand dollars a year. That eighty percent area median income space. So the board, um, which just as a gentle reminder, we are holding a seat for that we would love to have filled. Um, would, has voted to try their best to bring one of those homes down in cost through fundraising efforts to two hundred ninety thousand dollars so that it would be affordable to that eighty percent area median income household. So we're doing that right now. We have a fundraising concert in September um, at the River Club in Kennebunk. It's a chamber music concert. Tickets are on our website as well. And we are doing an active um, fundraising campaign through grants and donors to try to get that price down. We need to raise about seventy thousand dollars in order to bring that price down to where people can afford it in that income bracket. Any questions on any of that? Yes.
Well, you're saying if the average price to build is four hundred and forty eight, they're going to be buying it for three hundred and seventy eight. How much is the town of Kennebunkport going to tax?
Great question. So they are going to be taxed at their, their, their market value. And their market value is that three seventy eight. Because that's what they can sell it for, because they're capped. Okay, so they're only going to be taxed at what they could in fact sell the home for.
Plus they won't have condo fees.
Their condo fees will be very, very minimal and will only be what is necessary to maintain the shared road. This, the way that we've set up the condo, so a lot of condo associations, you own from the studs in. In this situation, they're actually going to own the entirety of their home from exterior finish in. Um, they own their well, they own their septic tank, you know, they're, they're, they're going to be really home. The only reason that we con, we did a condo sort of process was because um, Main Housing would not provide subsidy for the project because we have two family dwellings on leased land. Or we would have done the project the way that we did at Heritage Woods. So having it be a condo, I'm making up words, condoized allows for um, us to have the subsidy coming down through. They will be self governing. I mean, if, if the, if the homeowners for some reason decide that they wish to have high levels of, of HOA fees, that would be their decision to vote on, I suppose. But it is not our intention that there will be, this is not a, a neighborhood that will have strict landscaping requirements or, or things like that. It's simply a neighborhood that we have to, in order to um, get the subsidy and have the, the land make sense with those, the two family dwellings is having an HOA.
So the land that will make, con, will the condo association be responsible for paying the taxes on the land?
Yes.
And then taking care of the road?
Yes. Yeah. So um, what, and the three seventy eight is the highest that any home will be. We do think that it is likely that one of the homes we have, one of the homes has a full height basement. It will not be a finished basement, but it will be a dry, clean, full height basement. Um, that home, and it's a three bedroom, two story. We pictured that one being at three seventy eight and we, we really believe that the other homes are going to come in quite a bit lower than that. Um, and what we will do is the three seventy eight will help to offset the cost of that home that we're trying to pull down into that eighty percent.
So if an individual gets the home and all of a sudden, you know, one of them gets a great job, gets a promotion and they decide, you know what, I'm gonna, you know, change my kitchen around, I'm gonna put in granite countertops, I'm gonna put in tile flooring. And so now the value of that, in a normal situation, the value of that home would, could go up significantly. Is that a lot of that?
I love this question. Pete, they are homeowners, they may, they, they do need to clear with the board structural changes. Okay, it's important to us that our home not be devalued. So they do need to clear structural changes with the board. That maximum price formula that I've referenced earlier, that does have a space in it for upgrades that are deemed, uh, um, I don't know, what do I want to use? Certain upgrades would be allowed to be added with a straight line depreciation method to the maximum price formula. Granite countertops, tile floors are not among them. But let's say a homeowner, for instance, we've had this happen. A couple of homeowner, homeowners have, have wanted to buy sheds and place them on their property. Okay, that's seems like a, you know, investment that future home buyers will also really benefit from. And so we took the price of that shed, we said a shed lasts twenty years and it's a straight line depreciation. So if that homebuyer, homeowner rather, sells their home five years after they put the shed in, they'll get three quarters of the value of the shed added to their maximum price formula. Okay, we have a homeowner that recently just upgraded to um, uh, heat pumps for their heat system. Again, took the, what's the life expectancy of that heat pump? Straight line depreciation, that value of that heat pump installation goes to the maximum price formula. But if a homeowner wants to put in a decorative upgrade finish, they're welcome to do so, but it will not be added to their maximum price formula. It will just be something that they are enjoying as a homeowner. And we do, um,
The whole intent of, you know, for most people is they want to buy a home, they want it to appreciate so that at some point in time they could, I mean, we don't, the intent is not to flip.
Right.
But the intent is, you know, to buy a home and stick with it for X amount of years and then maybe upgrade and get some decent money. And it looks like this is kind of tying their hands a little bit.
Yes, it is, but it's, I guess I would want to not use that language. Only because people walk in openly understanding. This, these homes, according to Bangor Savings, are valued about six fifty to six seventy five. They're buying these homes for three hundred to three hundred and twenty five thousand dollars less than market value. So their hands aren't being tied. They've been given an opportunity to get in, right? And so over time, they do build equity from the small increases in value of the home as well as from whatever they pay off on their mortgage on their home. Okay, so instead of, most of the people that buy our homes or that are applying for our homes are currently renting. Well, there's no equity coming back to them in a rental situation, right? So it's giving them the opportunity to get their foot on the rung for a homeownership ladder. And when they go to sell this home, they will walk away with money to help them put a down payment on the next home. Um, if they want to. We also, we have one um, household that um, is in our Heritage Woods neighborhood. They're very open. They're like, this is where we are going to die. I'm going to die in this bed. I'm going to die, you know, and they're my age. They're hopefully not going to be passing for the next, you know, at least a couple more decades. Um, and so we would love people to think of our homes as someplace that they want to live forever. And we understand that when home buyers purchase a home with us, they are benefiting from a deep, deep, deep discount on the price of that home in exchange for a much smaller um, equity bill.
Right. True.
I have another question.
Yeah.
If you have someone come in who needs a handicap accessible home, are you able to handle that for someone?
We are not. But um, these homes are being built at, like by, they're being built before we've identified buyers. So we have tried to think about, not ADA compliant. Okay, so um, not with like the large turnarounds in a bathroom and so forth to accommodate a wheelchair. But with the single story homes, that's part of why we wanted to include some single story homes in this um, round of home building. So that if there are households that have mobility challenges in some way, maybe not wheelchair accessible, but that the, there's homes here that can better accommodate people with limited mobility than having homes that only have bedrooms on a second story. Um, and certainly if we have someone um, that uh, needs a ramp. Okay, we would certainly hope that we could be working with like the Lions Clubs and the Rotary Clubs to help make those um, those changes prior to the person taking the home. Okay, any other questions?
So Keith, the last time that she was here, we, I, I think we talked a little bit about the Bergeron Drive property.
Yes.
Is that, yeah, is that something that, you know, you folks are interested in or?
Very.
Yeah.
Yes, um, what we would really love to see happen here, we would love a survey of that land before we took that land from you. As we accepted graciously and with deep gratitude of that land from you. We would want to have a, a survey of the land so that we know there's clear title. Okay, that's really important to us to make sure that if we have a piece of land coming to us, that it's clear and ready to go. And because of the way that that land is situated, we would want to make sure that um, part of that survey work is really identifying, does the town have deeded access to the road that brings us to that land? Um, because without that deeded access, we would have no way to, to get onto that land. So we would be beyond thrilled to have that land um, come to the Housing Trust. We would, if the townspeople of Arundel chose to have that happen. I, and I can't remember if you guys have that as something that the select board can do independent of town meeting or if it's a town meeting process for you. In Kennebunkport, it's done, it's a select board action. In Kennebunk, it's a town meeting action. And I don't recall what is, is here in Arundel.
This would be a town meeting.
Town meeting, okay. We would love to be on your June town meeting floor. We would really love that opportunity. Um, and what we would do is
We, we own some property out here on Bergeron Drive.
It's forty two acres and we don't expect it's all developable because it is main. Okay, and if it's not wet, it's rock and, and there's, you know, there's work to be done to kind of tease that out. Um, but if we were able to put in, you know, six homes or ten homes in there over the couple of years, that would be amazing. And what we would want to do is we would want to meet with this board. We'd want to hear from you, kind of what you think is the right aesthetic for this community. We'd want to be able to come to town meeting with a kind of a fleshed out design idea of what that neighborhood would look like, what sort of homes we would be building, how we would be marketing those homes so that the people of, of Arundel would know what was happening and, and could really vote in good conscience about what they wanted to do there. About what they wanted to do there, um, I, I'm gonna try to think about the right language to use in a public setting. We are um, we are always delighted to um name things after anyone that people want things named after. We are uh really happy to work with communities, so let's say that the townspeople of Arundel said, alright, yeah. We, once a survey has been done, clear title has been proven and we want to go to town meeting. Let's say that the townspeople of Arundel said, okay, but we want, what, you you're gonna build eight homes, alright? We want one of those homes to always be right of first refusal for a town of Arundel employee. Okay, okay, great, we will hold a separate lottery, randomized drawing, the first time round. Of only town employees of the town of Arundel. And if there are people that wish to do so, and then if that person ever wants to sell that home, we will do the same thing. We have the opportunity to, as long as we do not violate the Fair Housing Act, okay? You cannot say to us, we only want those homes to be sold to families with children. No, that's a violation of the Fair Housing Act, we cannot do that, okay? But we are delighted to work with the community to, if you say to us, it's important to us, if if the townspeople are going to vote. To allow the Housing Trust to have this land for the purpose of of workforce housing. Then we want to know that some of this house, these houses are only going to be for the workforce that serves the people of Arundel directly through their municipal government. We can do that, okay, or we want to have two of those homes as a local option lottery. We can do that, okay? Do I hear a question?
What's local op?
The local option lottery, we would say that, um, let's say that we had eight homes and two of them were going to be done through local option lottery first. We would say, okay, do you currently live in Arundel? Or you guys could say, we're okay with the three towns, but if you want to make it around, do you currently live in Arundel? Do you currently work in Arundel? Or do you currently have children in the RSU twenty one school system, just to kind of, I I think, you know, people that might have. Um, you could pair a big picture, a household in which parents had split. And you have one parent that is living here with their kids in RSU twenty one and one that's trying to get back into the the area to be closer, okay? So we can set that up. That is not something that we would be open to doing for the entirety of the neighborhood, that becomes very restrictive and I think it would be very hard. To, you know, but I think that if it's important to the townspeople to make sure that town land is going to serve townspeople. We can work that out and we can make sure that that's clearly, you know, understood and documented and and carried forward. Uh, we happen to have a really excellent uh legal firm that we work with. Um, that would help make sure that all of those documents were up to stuff. So we would really welcome that conversation continuing. It is important to us, however, that that land be surveyed before we would want to move forward with designing a neighborhood. Um, and if the select board is open to getting that land surveyed, um, what we would look to do then is maybe have a workshop at some point with. Those of you that are interested in doing so with us to talk to us about, okay, the land's been surveyed, we have a better sense of the topography. We have a better sense of what's buildable there and what is not, and we'd want to hear from you, what do you guys see happening there? One of the reasons that we would like to see, you know, at least six. If main housing is um continues to benefit from the state's generosity. In their affordable homeownership program, they do have size of a neighborhood requirement for subsidy. And every time we have access to subsidy, we're gonna want to take advantage of that. Um, any other questions? Alright, then I will wrap up, you've been very gracious with your time, um, my last plea, join us, okay? Um, whether it's one of you find five folks sitting in front of me, whether it's someone that you convinced to go represent you, we don't care. Keith joins us, we treat him pretty well, right Keith?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, we're good time, guys, we're good time, we meet on the first Thursday of the month. Um, we currently meet at the Kenabunk Port North Street Fire Station, but we'd be happy to meet here if you want us to rotate through here. That would make you feel like you were were being welcomed and honored for your time. Um, but we would love to, we find that it's really helpful for the work that we do. If there is someone connect connected to the select board that really understands what we're doing and how it benefits a community. And by having our board, our bylaws are set up to have a select board voting, select board liaison from each town that we serve. And we do that so that the townspeople are really feel like they have somebody that understands their town. That's helping inform our goals and our policies. And our town managers are there as non-voting members. And they also are really a great resource, helping us make sure that the work that we're doing reflects the needs of the communities that we're serving. Because we do recognize while it is three towns, one community. Each of those towns has a distinct character and distinct needs and we want to make sure that we never lose sight of each individual town's character and needs. Okay, so that's my my last pitch, um, and if you don't want to be on our board, maybe that feels too formal. We've got so many committees that would love your help. So anyone watching also, um, we really rely on people's energy and ideas and drive to get the work done that we could get done. Cause it's it's sometimes a bit of a heavy lift. Thanks so much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Loretta.
Thank you, appreciate it. Okay, next item is a liquor license catering approval for Ledgewood Pass Inc.
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, this is the uh, uh, Disc Golf facility on Route One. Um, here in Arundel, they came in last year and received a uh permit from you folks to operate in. And and have alcohol at the site and they're just renewing their application from previous year.
Make a motion, we we approve the Ledgewood Pass Inc. application.
Which is made a second. Questions, comments, discussion? Done all in favor of them, approved, it's approved.
Okay, I'll send it on down, thank you.
The next item then is the automobile graveyard permit renewal by Ranrec, Ranrick Trust.
Again, Mr. Chair, annually, um. Randrick uh Trust has um requested renewal of this application. And as I noted, uh, uh, this this application or this process has been ongoing for them since nineteen eighty one.
So just a quick question. Way back when this was approved, there was um a letter from a. Landowner all the way over on the other side because there's no, the 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 ordinance states it's supposed to be some sort of buffering. And there's no buffering there and there was a a letter stating that, yeah, the landowner was okay with with not having a buffer there. That's still uh.
I have, don't, I have no idea about a buffering. Yeah, so.
Cause that, cause the ordinance states that anything like that has to have some sort of like vegetative like buffer and there's there's no buffer, it's just like a wide open field and. They had, I think the planning board had requested a letter from the landowner, but if there hasn't been any any concerns, because that landowner has changed. Since. One of the two boys has passed away years ago, not myself, but his. Nobody's complained, I'm okay with this.
So sir.
Is, yeah, is this property adjacent to uh? Some of the two boys property where's Ranrick Trust part of that?
Yeah, right, where the where the where the curve is, you get the farm, it's right behind the big building, it's 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 right there though.
Uh, I've been there, okay.
I make a motion, we approve the um. The um automotive graveyard for Lan- Landrick Trust.
Second then.
The men seconded to renew the automobile graveyard permit, Ranrick Trust, all in favor of us.
Send that on down as well.
I don't think they're actually very active in that anyways, but.
I I'm not quite sure.
They're just keeping the permit, I don't think they're really active. Lock Jan.
And finally. Public Works Department's wheeled excavator issue.
Yes, I, yeah, I say, I send you all uh the memo um. Uh, from last week, um, Ben, in in to Ben's defense, this has been a discussion that. I was having with Terry Merrill prior to his departure. Um, based on the fact that um, the twenty fifteen excavator, we had some issues that were. Uh, ongoing with it and we were concerned about it, so um. When Ben took over, he sort of uh inherited that to a certain degree and has continued to move forward in inquiring. Um, he's come up with some other interesting ideas in terms of size of it and I can let him explain that a little bit more in terms of size. As well as uh maneuverability, particularly in a one one lane situation, that would be. Um, beneficial to us as well and uh. In the meantime, we certainly received uh three proposals for for units. Um, that would possibly, that obviously would fit our needs, um, and come up with. A proposal, what we think would be a a nice one, but I'll let Ben fill in any details that uh he can reference to it.
All up to you, Ben.
Um, so just for some background, um, currently have a twenty fifteen one Volvo one eighty E wheeled excavator. Um, just the number refers to the tons of the vehicles, it's about eighteen tons on the road. For our purposes, Republic Works, we need a wheeled excavator. If we had any metal tracks to tow it and if it was on metal tracks, we'd destroy any roads, so rubber wheeled excavator suits already pretty well. Uh, the current one that other works has. Uh, at the time when it was bought ten years ago, it was the only size wheeled excavator that was made. And ensuing ten years, technology gets better, they make them a lot smaller, but still wouldn't meet our capacity. So this size excavator that I'm looking at and that that I've had my mechanic and operator both uh. A lot of input on, it's a, bring the Volvo size to one fifty E. Uh, Caterpillar's a three fifteen and a case is a one fifty five E. Uh, they're all about fifteen tons on the road and the. The feature that makes these three, kind of the one I'm looking at. Uh, is they are having reduced tail swing, so when we're operating on a road like Limerick Road where it's a high traffic area. Um, the one eighty, if we swing ninety degrees to work in the ditch. The uh rear of the excavator sits about six feet into the opposite lane. So we have to have cars run on the, either we have to have vehicles running in the shoulder. Or we have to stop work, swing out of the way, let cars pass. It makes it dangerous for us on the road, um, it's a very tight area and it makes danger for vehicles passing us. So I worked with a few different vendors to get prices for these other vehicles. And I'm obviously for ten years it's worked, right? Um, an issue we're having now is that the. Amount of maintenance on this vehicle is accelerating at a pretty rapid pace. Uh, last year, there was a computer issue that took a couple of weeks to fix and costs almost twenty thousand dollars. We're spending five hundred bucks a week right now on maintenance parts. It's not insignificant and I have a new issue that I was made aware of on Thursday where the. When the machine is turned off, the hydraulics bleed out of the arm causing it to curl. And it's, I have a couple areas in my uh. My yard right now, they're all dug up because the excavator shifted overnight without anyone there, so it is rapidly becoming a hazard. To have. Um, so these three vehicles, uh, Keith and I went up to Chadwick, uh, Baros in Westbrook. Um, and and took a look at the Volvo, which is the lowest priced uh machine, is also the. Same machine you have now, right, newer, smaller, but the controls are the same, everything's the same and our our maintenance vendors will be the same. Um, and, you know, it's a, it's a nice vehicle that would suit our needs for ideally more than the next decade.
Is there any difference in capacity in terms of weight that it can lift compared to the other two?
It has a uh just under four feet shorter arm reach. And in a one ton less capacity, but still has, uh, thank you, you're picking around in front of you.
I'm sorry, I I I'm.
I'm sorry, that's for the Volvo.
Comparing it to the the three that you're looking at.
Uh, the vehicles have almost the same, um, they're specific, the specs are within five percent of the same for all of them.
Good, no thanks.
And to create to our current model, uh, it's it has a four foot shorter arm reach and about a one ton less capacity, but still puts it at about nineteen tons of lifting.
So is there any situation that you can think of where? These three machines would not work, that you would have had to use the existing machine?
The only two times that we use every inch of the bucket that we have now. Are on Monday, Thursday mornings when we crush the trash in the dumpsters at the transfer station. And it would change how we load vehicles with salt and sand. But it would not stop us from loading vehicles with salt and sand in the winter. It would mean we have to put the machine at a different location in the barn. But I had Jay, our operator, test it out in that location with our current machine and it does still work, even if we cut back our our reach.
So what would we do at the transfer station?
Yeah, it would just mean we'd have to, um. Currently, what we do is we put the uh front end loader on the backside of the dumpsters, we hold that there. And then we use the arm to drag the drag the material closer to the dumping location and smash it down. What we do is we do that for everything we could and then we just move the loader out of the way, come around to smash that stuff in the far side down. It's not the best situation, but it's there in mind are the amount of trash that we're actually grabbing from that far away. They are not full zero swing, they're reduced tail swing, so they stick, so the, on the Volvo, for instance, for example, the. Chassis is nine feet, six inches and the swing is one foot, one inch over the wheel when it's turned. So it's still within the eleven feet of the lane width of down roads. It's not a full zero turn machine, nothing in this size and weight class meets a zero turn. Call it classification, but it is a a very reduced tail swing, it's it ends up being about four, three to four feet shorter than our current tail swing radius.
How how many of the employees are trained to operate this machine?
Uh, so. Currently, Jay Bassett is our operator, he does eighty percent probably of our operating. Um, but we are working to train, oh, I would. I believe that there is no task that only one person should know how to do. So today we were working on a smaller road, I had uh Dave LaPointe, who's been with us for a long time. He was in the operator with Jay assisting and instructing, so. Because the machines are so similar, everyone who has a cursory knowledge of how to use it will retain that cursory knowledge and. You know, it'll allow us to kind of get more practice when I work on small roads and then. It'll be a little bit less scary working on Limerick Road for, just to be able to have a little less experience.
Phil, is, do you, is there a concern with what you would ask about the zero swing, do you have a concern about that at all?
With the, with the wheeled excavator, the. Only size of a wheeled excavator is a one. One thirty-five from Case. Volvo does not make a small enough wheeled excavator that has a pure zero turn, and Cat didn't give me a price on the one that they have. Track excavators are a little bit more forgiving on the zero turn because you have more surface area to spread the load out. Which is having four point loads on the tires, it does make it a little bit tricky with zero turns. A lot of mini excavators, we consider mini excavator. Uh, even less than one thirty or one twenty. Are a little more forgiving for zero turns, um, but they would not have their reach that we require for a large part of what we do.
This machine would be, I think I heard him saying four feet short reach. You could request a call along the stack.
We could, they.
And it, it makes it a little less stable. But if you're not a good operator, the region is really important.
Absolutely, and it's something that I have looked at. We didn't get prices for it. Uh, because when I asked Jay, he didn't think it was needed. Anything that we can do, ninety-nine percent of what we do now with four feet less. There's very few scenarios besides crushing dumpsters. That we are extending ourselves to the absolute maximum, and if we are in that scenario. There's probably a better way we could be doing it, because. At that point, we're putting our rangers down, we're taking up a lot more space in the road anyway.
See availability with them.
The Volvo one is in stock in Westbrook. I don't know about the cat or the case, um, but, uh. Keith and I actually drove to Westbrook last Wednesday to take a look at it. So it is sitting on a lot.
Do you have more than one bucket or are there? Claw, what you got, the thumb, uh, do, do you have things? That you purchased for the existing Volvo that you'll be able to use with this new machine?
We have three buckets currently. We have a digging bucket, two grading buckets. Uh, with the trade-in, probably trading one of our grading buckets, we don't need to, they're one slightly smaller than the other, and get rid of the smaller one. Um, and we'll look to purchase a three sixty swivel bucket and a, uh. Essentially a claw for picking up trees. Those are not priced into this, that'd be a separate purchase down the road.
I'm sorry, which, which part would these have per purchase?
Uh, the claw, uh, grabbing trees and a three sixty swing, uh, three sixty bucket, which just means you can spin the bucket. So instead of dragging it to you, you can turn the bucket around and push it away from. But those were not priced into this bid, and. We could get them down the road. The machine is compatible with that with no modification. They're not inexpensive. Yes, yes. It, it, they are great. The problem with this three sixty bucket is that we have to then also buy a. Uh, a claw because. Even just today, we had a tree come down on Brimstone. And we needed the thumb on the excavator to grab it, three sixty bucket's not compatible with the thumb. So, there are. A ton of perks, there's a couple of disadvantages, and so it just requires us to have more equipment on site. Which we have the space for, it's just a matter of. Matter of budget. Like all things. He quotes, I think, sixty-two hundred dollars for the three sixty bucket, sixty-two hundred. Dollars for the three sixty bucket. He did not quote us for the claw, sixty-two hundred. Oh, it's not like that. Maybe, maybe she had another quote. He did, that was the verbal quote he just gave you over the phone. He didn't, he didn't put that one down, um. And that was part, that one, when we talked about that, that's a big part of the trade-in, but you stepped away from trading in attachments just because it was too messy with. Trying to get similar quotes from all three vendors. It's just. So the case didn't offer those attachments for this machine, so I didn't want to have one that was bidding. More expensive stuff that would tilt the scales of the, of the bid process.
Hey folks, so. And you're looking for authorization to spend three hundred thou, or two hundred and twenty thousand, six hundred? Like against your three hundred thousand dollar capital reserve.
Let me move that we approved that expenditure for this Volvo excavator.
Is there a second? I'll second. I do have a question, though. Go ahead, to Keith. We, we discussed this at all, was this part of our budgeting? I know that we put three hundred thousand in the capital reserve, but.
We didn't talk specifically about purchasing this unit, no.
What was the, when we put the three hundred thousand, was there a thought process at all?
I think it was just the thought of having money set aside in the event that we had to have some purchases, plus we were thinking. And we're still thinking about future, um. Development of, um, building space.
Right.
Out there. Um, in fact, uh, one of the things that we're gonna, we're attempting to do here, um. Is to get a, uh, break room built at the existing facility. There's some location out back, it's a garage area that can be easily. Um, accommodate that, so we can have a clean environment for the folks to. Eat their lunches and perhaps have a rest area in the event. Uh, we're thinking of that. Um, as an interim, and then we'll have to come back at some point and look at, uh. Future, um. Building.
So that, I, that's a separate subject, but that break area, where's funding for that coming?
It'll come out of this as well. It'll come out of this capital. We've, we figure it's going to be somewhere in that fifteen thousand dollar range. To do that rehab.
I, I don't have Phil's experience with. Equipment like this, but I have a little bit, and my experience is that once. Things start breaking and hydraulics start leaking and computers start going bad, that. Much better off getting something new rather than trying to keep nursing something along. Pretty, because this is our only excavator, correct? Yeah, so.
All right, I support it. I just want to be clear where the money is coming from and make sure that we spend it appropriately, so.
Yeah, I think while we have Ben here, I just want him to, um, give us a quick status report on. Um, staffing levels. I think we're, we're pretty, uh, pretty pleased with what's happening, but I'll have Ben explain it.
So, uh, when I took over as director, the staff was two. Labor operator generalists and one mechanic and myself. Um, I recently hired a new, uh, generalist, his name's Garrett, lives right, right down Camp Ground Road. And I extended an offer today to another person, uh, recently back to a rental from out of state. Um, which will bring the full-time staff to four. And, oh, and I promoted Jay Bassett from labor generalist to foreman. So. The staff is now myself, a foreman, mechanic, two, uh. Uh, labor generalists, and then ideally, I, I turned back, like, sent the offer like five players this afternoon. I'll be here back in the next thing or two. So we can have one more, that if, uh, this fellow accepts my offer, that would, as I said. But fully staff department, um. And ideally I'd look for one more part-time on-the-hall person for the winter, uh, the plowing.
So very, very pleased with, uh, some of those efforts, um, and in fact, I think, uh. At least, uh, one class, class A operator within, and possibly two with one of these other hires, so. That'd get us two class As and we've got some Bs. So we're getting in a little bit better shape than. We had anticipated earlier in the summer, so.
I'm, I'm. Hundred and ten percent in favor of having. Adequate staffing for public works. I, is that staffing level incorporated in our budget?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you.
Ben, a little, little different subject here, but have you had an opportunity to look at the one-way? Situation in the circle at Clearview, whether that was the right move or if it's in the right direction?
I have had a chance to look at that one way. You know. I don't know if there's rules about it. I had just always assumed that you went a right turn into a cul-de-sac. Because just kind of flow with traffic.
Right.
I don't know, I guess, is the, uh. Is the best answer, is it the right move? I don't, I mean, I, I, I think that at one way, cul-de-sac's a good idea for a safety. Like one house really over there, so. Guess that guy could go the other way if he wanted to, or the sheriff's not going to stop him.
I'm just, I'm just concerned that, you know, is it really needed to, I mean, we. We went to a one-way right off the bat, and I'm, and I think we just, I, I. I was surprised that we actually went and put a one-way after there was a discussion on that. Um, and my concern is, I know it's only one house, but the way that that direction is. It makes it very difficult for that individual to come out of his yard and follow the one-way. And then you get neighbors complaining that he's going the wrong way on the one-way, so what do we? You know, do we get rid of the one-way and go back to a, you know, it's been two ways for. Thirty, forty years, right, but.
I think an option that we would have is to turn the one-way around, if, if the one resident is on that. If, if he can't make a, a right turn easily out of the driveway, if we make that. Which is kind of what I just said, if that thing even go right.
Yeah.
Make that a left entrance to the one-way, if that's here for the, even if, even if the neighbors are. And they, they know which way traffic will be flowing on that road, whether that's. The correct or not, I can't quite speak to that. I, I will say I do have a one-way sign that faces the direction, so it wouldn't be a big worry to switch that sign.
Well, I have map here, so I don't know which way the one-way goes, but if you're coming from the new road and you're going straight across. I assume that when you got up there to the stop sign and we turned right towards the cul-de-sac. At that one-way, we would just keep going and go around the cul-de-sac.
It goes, it goes this way, right, one-way.
Goes off of Maple Way.
But then Michael's driveway is this way. And for him to, it makes a shop and he really can't make that turn this way, so he comes out this way, which. And then the neighbors are complaining about it.
Well, we can, we can solve that. I can just go take the signs down.
Right, I mean, I'm saying, why did we even make it a one-way to begin with? I mean, I, I don't think, personally, I don't, I know it's a small cul-de-sac. But it's not like there's tons of traffic there, and I'm think, take the signs out and leave like it was for the last thirty-some odd freaking years. That's, that's. That's my point, but.
Didn't somebody come here and ask for that?
Huh?
Didn't somebody come here and ask for that?
Yes, yeah, they did.
Right, I think that was just the, that's how I would assume. I guess I never, I hadn't given it much thought.
But.
This, this question, before you return to a cul-de-sac.
Yeah.
I think my thought is, you know, most traffic typically flows there, right? You think of any, any rotary, the, in the Kenny, Kenny bunk, you have the rotary there. Um, it's a right, right-handed rotary.
I ju, I just do know that, uh, there's been several complaints made at the, um, Sheriff's Department. They've been down, they had to talk to parties. As a result of the one-way road, road being placed, so. It's created, uh, a little bit more discussions than I think we, we had thought, anticipated when it went up.
Yeah, yeah, I, I, I think we should just, you know, we had one, one neighbor complain and we, and we right off the bat, we went and made it. And I was actually surprised that that was done, so I think personally, I, I, I think we should go back to the way it was. We've, we've created more of an issue by going one-way than leaving it alone.
Time this week, I can get out there and take that sign down, if that's, that's what you guys would like.
Well, we did, we did it without a vote, but now you want to take it down. So do you want to vote on it? Do you want me to?
Never voted.
I, that's what I just said. I said, we never, you never voted on it. I did it as a, as a dictatorial, uh, decision on my end. So, um, I don't. Yeah, so, i- if, uh, if you want to vote, that's fine. If not, then you can leave it up to me.
For this bot now. And make a motion, we remove the one-way.
I'll get it out of there tomorrow.
Well, let's wait, let's see if we get a motion in second, and see if we get a vote.
All in favor?
Well, opposed.
So it's three, two. Okay.
I will. While I have your attention, um, I know I, I missed last, uh, the last SLEF meeting, um, I believe it was talked about the. Downing Road Bridge posting, has I spoken about?
Yeah, it was.
Last meeting. Um, that road is posted to twenty-two tons. That was posted by Main DOT. It was a bit of a surprise, didn't think it was a ton of heads up, they were going to post that road. Presents a pretty sizable issue for, for the fire department and public works. I cannot plow Downing Road with a fully loaded dump truck. Or even a half-loaded dump truck. The dump trucks themselves weigh seventeen thousand pounds. They haul about forty thousand pounds worth of sand and salt. So there is an issue there. There's plans to retrofit that bridge in twenty twenty-seven. My other concern. Is that on Route thirty-five, there is plans to fully replace the Days Mill Bridge. Next year in March. If that.
It's moved up to this fall.
This fall. Worse somehow. If that bridge is also posted, is also removed. To plow, right guys to plow. We call it the uptown part of town. You need to run trucks, back them down Curtis Road. There's no good turnaround place for us without crossing that bridge. We are going to have to have. A modified five fifty, run down, down, Downing Road to plow that and turn around in a driveway somewhere. So.
You mean this five fifty bulldozer?
A five fifty, a one-ton Ford at five fifty with a.
Sorry.
Uh, with a plow.
Yeah, the John Deere five fifty.
It'd be, it'd be quite, it'd be, bulldozer would be pretty exciting to drive down, but I think the town would be upset about it. Um, I have spoken to people I know at Main DOT. And they have, and I've spoken to, uh. Kim at Kennybunk Public Services. Um, and we have been roundly ignored by Main DOT. They.
You've been what?
Just ignored by Main DOT. They won't call us back, they won't give us answers. Uh, when I mentioned it was public safety concern, they said, well, we can tell you that you can drive over it, but I guess the police won't stop you. Which is not a good answer. For that, so I'm not sure if any of you people know anybody at Main DOT or the state, but. If you could reach out to them, it would not be in vain, sure.
Did so to our state rep?
I don't know.
Yeah, Wayne. Yeah, Wayne Perry would be the one, we can reach out to Wayne. He's on the department, he's on, he's the chairman of that group. It, um, I remember us having a discussion earlier, would twenty-five ton do it?
Four, twenty-five tons would get your vehicles. That's your pump truck, fully loaded is forty-nine thousand pounds. So it would just barely cover the fire, fire trucks. I still could not get a dump truck down it. I can make do with a smaller plow. It's not the end of the world.
Yeah, generally, the way that used to be plowed is that we would plow all the way over to Kennybunk and turn around at Winnow Hill Road. Uh, and then come back.
And that's not the end of the world, and if, you know, that's, that's why I try to keep relationships with, you know. I can, I can make that happen, um. I did check, I went to the fire department on Wednesday last week, I think, and I checked the truck and fully loaded it is forty-nine thousand. Four hundred and something pounds, so twenty-five tons would just do it.
Okay. Yeah, I'll reach out. Thanks, uh, thanks, Ben, appreciate that.
Thank you, Ben.
You mean on Downing Road?
They need to post at all ends. There is a small sign that says.
Yeah, it says posted twenty-two tons to bridge, yeah. It's right near, yeah, the limit road, it's right in the entrance. It's right near, yeah, the Limit Grove, right in the entrance.
Correct.
To put a, a four-by-eight sign right at the bridge that roam close to certain weight limit. You need to stop them at the bridge. Once they get on Downing Road.
No, they're not. Right. Well, I can reach out to DOT again and see if they can put additional signage up, something different for signage.
From turning.
Yeah.
Both ways.
Thirty-five.
Correct.
As I said, once they get on that road.
Right. Yeah, I agree. There's only so much we can, there's so much we can do, guys, but we'll fight, we'll, we'll reach out to them.
Okay, we've got a payable warrant? Second?
All in favor? Anything else, anybody?
Of course.
Yep.
Phil's got some.
Go ahead.
Make sure your mic is on.
Wondering what is the status of the uh intersection of Limerick Road and is it Curtis Road?
Brimstone.
Brimstone.
Yeah.
Brimstone.
Brimstone. Uh no status right now. Excuse me, I have no status on it right now. Something that we should be looking at a little bit more aggressively.
Yeah. I thought I saw some surveyors out there a week or two ago.
I'd have to double-check with uh um BH two M, see if they had been out there. They did give us a preliminary uh survey report of that, so.
Uh, yeah, so Keith, it was last me, last week? We were kind of standing outside talking about the playground. Um and maybe the possibility of at some point in time putting some covered seating area. Do we have money in our rec reserve fund to cover something like that? There's something that maybe we can look at?
I shouldn't have said anything, but no.
Well, you're absolutely correct. It actually was brought up to me separately um the other day and I'm like
It, it's something, it, it's funny because I've been out there with my grandchildren and I've had come to, come up with the same.
Yeah.
I should have some sort of shade out here, but I'll, I'll, I'll look at the uh capital reserve funding for the rec department. I do know, I don't think we spent all of the reserve funding we had for the playground. So there may be some money left there to to perhaps put up some sort of shelter or gazebo or something.
Right, yeah. Yeah. It, it, it's funny because we just talked about it and
Yeah, I know.
This past weekend, somebody hit me up on it. I'm like, son of a gun, did you, like, were you snooping around or something?
Anything else, anybody? Want to do a churn?
Second at eight thirty-three PM.
Favor.